Congratulations, I hear, on the never-ending journey.
Okay, we're gonna get the...
We're gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody who's here and watching. Welcome to the June 7, 2018 Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee meeting. I'm the Chair Stacy Goodman, and to my right is Councilmember Paul Winterstein, and then to his right is Council President Tola Martz. We have several -- four items on our agenda. The first two are related, Agenda Bill 7614, High Street Conversion, Issaquah Highlands, and that relates to and is, I think, part of a proposed preliminary plat. This is the second item, Agenda Bill 7480, West Ridge North Preliminary Plat, which is a quasi-judicial matter, which we'll talk about when we get to that item. And we also have Agenda Bill 7575, Timber Ridge Easeman Modifications, and Agenda Bill 7612, Amendments to the Issaquah Municipal Court Code Regarding Transfer of Development Rights Resulting from End of Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. And before we get started, and I think Lucy's gonna probably talk about this as well, Lucy Sloman, that the first two items are expected to be at Land and Shore for two meetings, and this would be the first of two meetings. So for folks who are watching and don't watch all the way through and hear us talk about that at the end, I would anticipate that these two items are coming back to us at our meeting in early July. And to start us off with the first item is Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager.
It's gonna be Lucy Sloman Show tonight with all these presentations.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, so as Councilmember Goodman indicated, tonight is an introduction. We consider this informational and provide context. It will give the committee an opportunity to hear from the public because this is a legislative process, and we're interested in identifying the committee's issues and concerns, and then we'll respond at the next hearing if we are not able to respond tonight. So I want to give a little context, because I know this is kind of unusual, the way this went. The plat is quasi-judicial, which means no new information, and we're dealing with that in the second agenda item. So the High Street conversion was separated off after UVDC made their recommendation so that we could have a legislative conversation. It's actually outside of the piece of property that is being platted, so that's how that determination could be made. But we still need to be thoughtful in our discussions of High Street to try not to veer into plat issues. And I just want to let you know that I'm gonna give a relatively thorough presentation for both of them, especially High Street, to try and cover all the territory that we covered in response to the many, many comments we got at UVDC, so it's a little longer than my typical brief presentation. I just wanted to also point out that plats tend to be a high-level review. They are not design-oriented. The specific design is not a part of the plat. On the other hand, we need to make sure that the parcels are the right size, so we do get more information on certain pieces of property, such as streets or parks, to make sure that they're actually going to be big enough to accommodate the needs of that particular piece of property. So the two policy questions, and I just lay these out so you can think about them as we're going through the presentation. One is, should public facilities be repurposed even if it's continuing to be used for a public purpose? And is a linear park or multi-use trail a useful addition to the area? So, did you have a question?
Could you go back?
Yes.
One slide. I guess I don't know that it's super helpful for your -- this debate that we're gonna have later or next time, but the policy questions there, I'm wondering if they should incorporate some sort of criteria? Because I don't know if useful is a criteria. I think there's maybe...
Okay.
Public benefit.
No, that's...
Whatever the criteria is, I think. Otherwise, it seems like we're making up our own when we actually do have criteria.
Thanks. So, introduction to High Street. It's built in 2003 as part of the Town Center plat, which was mostly much further east, but this road was part of that plat. It was designed with two nine-foot lanes, two five-foot bike lanes, and a sidewalk implanting strip on the east side. The conversion was proposed by the applicant as part of their plat. It would result in a five-foot wide trail on the outbound side, on the view side of the road that's there now, and would add some recreation activities and an overlook. And it is outside the parcel, as I mentioned. So I'm gonna run through a series of sort of topics. Feel free to stop me if you want to. So one thing is that if we're gonna take out High Street, and the portion that we're proposing, or the plat proposes to take out, is the orange section.
And if I take out, can you be clear that it's not actually going away? It's just that vehicles are not gonna be allowed any longer.
Right, and part of the roadway surface would be removed. But if this is not going to be available for vehicles, what's going to substitute for that? And there are two roads that are proposed. One is called Street A, which runs parallel to High Street, and is in some places is called Sixth Place. The other is an extension of Ellis, which is also outside the plat and would continue until it connects with High Street. You'll notice that there is about 100 feet of High Street that remains with vehicular use. The reason is part of the Lakeside Development Agreement, one of the neighborhoods, Neighborhood F. So I've tried to enlarge this so it's approximately the same scale and would fit up against this. Neighborhood F had its vehicular circulation connecting at this point, so we needed to keep enough roadway to give the option of where that connection would be.
Is that extension on the bottom, the Ellis, is that under construction now?
Yes. It was part of another neighborhood.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask you a question? So I think it was Ellis was in some of the comments that came in from the community, there was a -- there were questions about road grade?
I have some slides on that in a minute, and I'll be glad to talk about that.
All right, thanks.
So let's take a step back and look at the context a little bit. This is the western portion of Issaquah Highlands. We have Grand Ridge Plaza here, West Highlands Park here, Lakeside Gravel Pit. Here's the Park and Ride, and then Swedish is down here. So Shelter, or I-H-I-F-C, property is along Discovery Drive and Ninth. Polygon's property is kind of, is all the land to the west, as well as West Ridge South. And so they have done a series, they've done a site development permit for this property, a site development permit for this property. They're doing a plat. That's the one that's under consideration this evening, as well as they're doing an administrative site development permit for the area right here.
Did you lost your video?
I lost the video?
Oh, no.
So another piece of this, and we started looking at it a moment ago, is if, right now, the High Street and Discovery Drive provide the two accessways to West Highlands Park, if this portion of High Street has vehicular use removed, what would substitute? I mentioned that the Street A would be part of that, as well as Ellis. But you can see that there's a whole network of streets that are being created as part of their site development permits as well. Along with the vehicular connection, though, is also the pedestrian and bike system that's being built out in this area west of Ninth Avenue. So all the solid yellow lines represent ped bike trails that are separate from, they're not part of streets, they're not bike lanes, they are multi-use trails by themselves. So the area that we're talking about is from here up to here, as well as when we have to preserve the road for Lakeside, then there is, the trail moves off of the road, and then we anticipate it continuing based on our discussions here. This is the trail system around Swedish, as well as the connection down to the valley floor. Where you see these dotted lines are where there are on-street connections, and the smaller white lines also represent separate trails that are wide enough for bike use.
Could you go back one slide? In the document, electronic document, it's a little more clear than what I'm seeing on the screen. On the right picture, some of those roadways are semi-transparent white, there's a solid white, and then there's a semi-transparent white. What's the difference?
So this was a slide that was originally primarily focused on the two main connection points to West Highlands Park. These streets, since they weren't part of the land use permit that was under consideration, are shown to indicate sort of the overall grid that was being created, but that weren't in review as part of that land use permit and did not directly provide connection to West Highlands Park.
Thank you.
So you can see that there is, again, a network of pedestrian and bikeways that is being created overall in this area. I do want to add that we don't know at this time what the design of Discovery will be, which is why it's in this kind of whitish-gray color. And the block between Seventh and Eighth and Blakely, it will be further subdivided. That's part of the Swedish Development Agreement, but we don't know exactly how that will happen, so I didn't show anything in that area. So a lot of this, the discussion focused on the vision of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, and so I wanted to put some material together to kind of capture some of that vision. The two images on the left are from the original commitments for Issaquah Highlands back in So the vision in the Development Agreement for the road is to give pedestrian priority with vehicular functionality, and it emphasizes narrow, slow roads as being encouraged while fast, no-parking collector roads are discouraged. And in addition, there is a variety of safe places for play and exploration, creating a sense of belonging for all ages rather than just focusing on working adults, which I think is kind of an interesting notion, and creating common areas and viewpoints. So our kind of conclusion as going through that was that there was a lot of emphasis on safe areas for kids to play, and in the discussions and concerns that we heard from the community. And obviously, having areas where there aren't cars is inherently a very safe place for kids to play. And as we looked at some of the roads and talked to Public Works Engineering, I think some of their concerns related to High Street being, having no intersections, because, A, that's not very consistent with the vision, where we're having this regular grid of streets and intersections, but it also doesn't really slow cars down. And Public Works Engineering is already dealing with a big traffic calming program in the eastern part of Issaquah Highlands. And when I spoke with Kurt Seaman, he concurred that the kinds of things that we're trying to do in the plat, he thinks will help us avoid having to take some of these remedial actions in the future. So parks and trails, that's obviously a big piece of this. The plat was not intended to show the design of how High Street would ultimately be. There are some indications. We have made a commitment that once, if this is approved, that there was a process laid out where not only would we have our typical land use permits, but we would also made a commitment to go back to the UVDC and have a conversation with both the West Highlands Park community and the Urban Village Development Commission, as well as any other residents, and the HOA, who is going to be responsible for maintaining it, and really dig down into what amenities and uses the community thought were the most appropriate ones.
So Lucy, tell me about that process of figuring out what amenities would be there? How, what, how do we get what we want if it's not required? And how do we know what money there is to spend? All of those realities that would happen if this was approved.
Right. So right now, the proposal shows a, shows, you know, three different nodes at where the pedestrian system comes out and meets the proposed trail, and a more sort of intensive use area in which there are three different kinds of activities shown along here. The commission had certain ideas, the public had certain ideas. To some extent, although it will be publicly owned, I think we do have to give a certain amount of discretion to the IHCA, because they are going to own and maintain it, and it has to be within the realm of things that are acceptable to them. There are certain things laid out in the Development Agreement, which we would use to help frame that conversation. In terms of cost, I think if we're staying consistent with the kinds of things that are shown there, I imagine that applicant's going to be fine. We don't have a specific budget to spend. They've told me they aren't gonna just open their pockets. But they have already made a huge commitment financially to this conversion, and so I think they want to do it right while also being reasonable. Does that help? Sort of.
Well, it answers the question.
And as I said, IHCA would maintain the improvements. Yes.
So you're saying that like that has been decided? But it's not, right? That's still, would have to, there'd have to be some formal action taken, right, for them to, if this were to happen, for them to take? It hasn't happened yet, has it?
So I'm a little, I'm a little caught, because we're in, we're outside the typical plat process. In the typical plat process, ownership and/or maintenance are identified, and so we would capture that through final plat. We have noted in the briefing response memo that we already have maintenance agreements between the city and the IHCA, and this would need to be addressed or incorporated into the existing or a new maintenance agreement. The IHCA has been at all the meetings, they've received all the staff reports, they agree that they would be taking maintenance responsibility. So I realize it's not a done deal. It would need to be finalized in a formal way, but I don't think that we have, we're doing something outside the realm of the kinds of things the IHCA does, and they are completely aware that this is kind of the context under which they've operated.
And so there's also been conversations with City Parks Department about the maintenance as well, and because of their view of how this would function, it's more of a neighborhood amenity than a city amenity, I think they were also willing to allow the IHCA to maintain this, even though it'll have a recreational component to it. So they've been part of their conversations along the way.
One of the conversations that came up during the plat review, and it relates to both items, so that's why I've noted where some of the elements are in the plat, is that there is not a specific requirement for so many square feet per dwelling unit. There is an expectation that each neighborhood has some facilities that serve that neighborhood, but there are no specific, like, if you have this many homes, you have to have X, Y, and Z. So what the applicant has done is put together a list. You can see the basic square footages, there's certain levels of finish and facilities that are provided. I think this begins to get to Councilmember Goodman's point to some extent. And I just also provide this because it gives a sense of sort of how much property they are setting aside, either with the trail or without the trail, relative to serving
Isn't there something that we set in place in the, set in the replacement regulations? Were the regulations about this? I don't remember the specifics.
So...
This was under the, this is under the DA?
Yes, it is. That's exactly right. And I was, sorry, I didn't mention that at the beginning. It is part of my presentation on the plat, but you're absolutely right. So yes, there is something in the replacement regulations. The replacement regulations are not the code that we're reviewing this under.
Do we know how that compares to this?
I don't know. I would have to look at that. I would add that this is something that the applicant put together. We do not have a specific square footage per unit, but there's become this kind of common expectation, and we have, over the years, done surveys of other plats and other multifamily projects to see the approximate size as a way of sort of comparing. And so the applicant put this together as part of their presentation while they were at the UVDC. These are three projects that have been previously approved, I mean, two of them have been previously approved, to give some context. So, and they are typical of projects in Issaquah Highlands. I think the other thing to point out is, as I mentioned, this is just one of like four projects that they are doing in this particular area. In addition, there's West Ridge South, next, down next to Swedish. And this was an illustration that the applicant put together as part of their presentation, excuse me, to the UVDC, giving a sense of other facilities that they're providing in other projects that they're doing. So the SDP for the North Townhouse project has this sort of green and a pea patch area. The South Townhomes has a kind of large park in this location. The ASDP for the Affordable Housing Project is under review, but this north area is an open space that will partly serve that project. So just to give you a sense of that, what the plat is providing is some amenities for those particular homes, but overall, they're providing a variety of things which everyone in the neighborhood can share. The following slides were also prepared by the applicant to give a sense of some of their ideas about how this could work. I've used this upper image before, but this is much larger, and it shows that once the eastern half of the road is removed, there is, I don't know, at least 20 feet of separation, but there's not only horizontal separation, there's some vertical separation between the backyards and the sort of public facilities that are provided. There isn't a buffer, per se. There's usually at least five to 10 feet of landscape between the more active areas and the lots. No buffer is required unless there was a, I think, at least a 10-foot tall climbing structure. I think the image on the lower left was provided just to give a sense of homes in relationship to a trail. These were some of the activity nodes and amenities that they provided to illustrate what they were thinking about, and kind of landscape palette that had seasonal interest and which would be consistent with the house and garden neighborhood type that they're One of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about was the material of the trail. Obviously, it's a road, so it's built in asphalt, and there was a concern that it would continue to be asphalt. It was pointed out, well, first of all, I'd say, if you look at the standards for multi-use trails in Issaquah Highlands, asphalt isn't allowed material. Second, there's certain kinds of trail users that prefer asphalt. Third, it's not an unusual material in the area. Certainly, a lot of the urban village trails are concrete, but that kind of depends on where they are. In more natural areas, they tend to be asphalt, more concrete when they are replacing sidewalks and such. So you can see Pickering Trail, East Lake Semamish Trail, and the trail in West Highlands Park are all asphalt. In thinking about the conversion from the road to the trail, one of the things that I talked about with the engineers was, is there a difference between the kind of asphalt that you use for a trail and asphalt that you use for a road? And they said, yes, there is a sort of higher, finer-grade asphalt, and so there is a condition that the road, the road that, surface that remained would be ground down and have a trail grade of asphalt applied to it. And then we also looked at other things that would make this seem intentional and trail-like. So on the right are two pictures of a trail in New Orleans that I saw right in the middle of doing this review, and I'm gonna show you both these two pictures of the project from New Orleans, as well as a project from another city. And the reason I show you these are, they are two linear, fairly industrial projects that have been converted into very popular public spaces. And so I think that while we think about things in one way, and it's sometimes hard to rethink those things and imagine them as a different kind of public space, it is happening around the country, and it's not unusual, and I think it serves as kind of a model. In New Orleans, this is the top of the levee along the river. It has railroad sightings and piers and all kinds of leftover industrial pieces, and yet it was really the design details and the wayfinding and the markers of the street intersections were really nicely done, and I think serve as a good model of one way we could think about this aesthetically. The other project, because we're setting a low bar here, is High Line in New York. This is obviously from a budget and a material completely different than what we're doing. But I do think that it does show that in a very narrow space, there are lots of different kinds of activities for all different kinds of users. There were, you know, when I was there, one summer day, there were people doing homework, there were kids in the water, there were older couples having coffee, there were tourists, there were just all kinds of people, families, students, lovers, everybody was out there. So I just, it's part of that rethinking of something that we have assumed is one thing. Street grades. There were a lot of comments and questions about street grades, and there is a limit in the city, so it was important to go back and look at the grades that are provided. Currently, the maximum road grade that's allowed in the city is 12%. For many years, 15% was the maximum. And so all the roads that are proposed comply. I will say, I mean, to the point that many West Highlands Park residents made, the existing segment that they're using right now is seven and a half percent. The Discovery Drive connection is more like 15%, which is under... The Discovery Drive connection is more like 15%, which is under.
[inaudible].
Right, that's okay. 15% down at this, this, these are estimates, but, and then I asked, I asked their engineer to provide us grades. So you can see that most of the grades along Street A are very flat. Topography is a little steeper as we head to the east. So the Federal Drive extension would be about eight and a half. The Ellis Drive extension would be 10, at least for, and it's a fairly short distance. You know, in trying to think about it in the context, I went to look at some of the other grades that are in the area, and it is indicative of the fact that we used to allow 15%. You can see in Isquah Highlands that we have 15 and 14% as well as 9% on Park Drive. The road, Discovery up east of Highlands Drive is 14 and a half. And even roads like Black Nugget, no, that's not Black Nugget, but, and the road up from I-90 are 7 and 9%, and they feel pretty steep, partly because they're very long. And within the context of, part of what we love about this, we always talk about the hillside views, and part of what comes with living in a foothill community is topography. Lastly, I would just add that Discovery Drive, part of the reason then that one is steep is the master developer did not want to build it. They wanted to have just the High Street connection to West Highlands Park. City felt very strongly that two connections were better and got them to build it, but they built it pretty much without doing a lot of regrading, and so it has, it's kind of, it's a secondary entrance. It is quite steep. As I mentioned, oh, yeah?
A question about, that's an interesting comment that you just labeled that secondary because I saw on the record that there was measured like 100 trips a day on High Street, which doesn't sound primary.
Well, that's a good point. I, I don't know how much traffic uses each street, so I am not in a position to say based on the trips that it's secondary. I think we think of it as secondary because it was not the primary one that was built by the master developer to serve that plat. But in fact, it may actually be the one that most people tend to use just for convenience to getting to I-90. So there were quite a few questions about Lakeside. As I mentioned, there's a separate development agreement for that adjacent property, and so the next couple of slides are about the relationship between this particular area of Isquah Highlands and Lakeside. One question was, isn't there a Lakeside Trail, and wouldn't that substitute for this? So this little diagram shows you the entire Lakeside area. High Street is right along here on this kind of edge. This is a larger detail of it. The elevations, you can see that this corner is high and High Street is dropping about 20, 25 feet. The trail through Lakeside is labeled as number four in this diagram. It would come from inside neighborhood, I believe it's B, and connect to neighborhood F. So there are a couple of things to talk about why we, staff didn't feel this was a substitute. One is, it could be 15 or 20 years before it's built. Because of the way it connects from inside one neighborhood to inside another neighborhood and is between 20 and 40 feet lower than the surrounding area, it's just not as convenient. It is a very good connection that we were very supportive of when we were doing the Lakeside Development Agreement, as in Lakeside Neighborhood to Lakeside Neighborhood. But as I showed, I hope conveyed, in the diagram looking at the overall area, we're looking at a overall, larger area connection that this would provide.
Would that trail also be below the rooftop level of the houses potentially built in Lakeside?
Why, let me show you that slide.
That slide was confusing.
I, I bet it is, and so I asked you to stick with me. It was difficult to try and convey. So first of all, I want to point out, I've just rotated everything so that the labels from the development agreement are legible. So north is now to the left, and this is High Street. I've put the labels back in, the elevation labels in, so this is High Point at, High Street at this point, and then at this point. There is a grading diagram, which you can see here, that was in the development agreement. And what that grading diagram shows is that the seam between neighborhoods C and D is at elevation 375, and D and E is between, is at 350. Because these neighborhoods B and F are almost up at street grade, they're going to block views. So the red arrows are meant to indicate where those neighborhoods would cut off the views and that the view would really be in between. And so I began to try and take a section, a very crude section, through about here. I want to emphasize that in trying to draw this diagram, horizontal, horizontal and vertical are not to scale, and this is very conceptual. Bicycle not to scale either. So if this is the edge of the B neighborhood to the left and the edge of the F neighborhood continuing on to the right, this is the area in which the view might be available. This shows the grade that, of the ground that would be created by this grading plan. This is the basic scale of the maximum height of the buildings. And so the Lakeside Trail is up here, and the High Street Trail is up here. So this diagram was mostly to answer the question that the UVDC had was, if we're talking about High Street having views, would the Lakeside Development block those views? And so our conclusion was no. And the diagram was just to try and begin to conceptually represent all those numbers.
Still a little confused. So between, so the section that you've got on the left.
Yes.
Between the edge of B and the edge of F, it, it basically, the table above and the, and the picture says that views would not be impacted by the Lakeside Development beneath it. But that's not the extent of the proposed trail, right? The trail extends in front of B and F?
The Lakeside Trail?
No, the trail we're talking about tonight.
High Street Trail is back here.
Right.
And it is between, say, 20 and, 17 and 46 feet above the rooftops of.
Between the, the edges of B and F?
Right, so.
What about when it's behind B, and what about when it's behind F?
Right, you would not, you would be looking at buildings in that, that case.
So the developments B and F would block the views?
Yes.
It's just that developments D and E would not block the views?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thank you.
Lucy, to be clear, your analysis would show that between the two red arrows, you would have views out. Outside of the two red arrows on High Street, you would be looking at buildings, most likely.
Right.
So what about landscaping? Because if you drive along High Street today, there's landscaping on Lakeside's property that blocks views.
Well, some of it is on Lakeside's property and some of it is not. It's kind of hard to see here, but you can see that there's kind of a sliver of land along here. And what, what they're proposing is to place, I believe it's this bend in the road, where there's a lot of land between the road and Lakeside's property in which the outlook could be built.
Your photo shows, might show that.
Yeah.
If you go back to the photo, High Street.
That one. Oh, the very beginning one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. This is the, so standing at this point, this approximate point, that's the view I had looking out. But if I go back to the beginning, yeah, it doesn't really look to.
So the green fence is the Lakeside boundary?
And if you, and if you drive it today, you will see that there is landscaping on the other side of the green fence that would block views. Then how do you prevent landscaping on the neighboring property from blocking the views, even if the rooftops don't?
Okay. So this was a slide, other than the sort of conclusions down at the bottom in orange, that we used to try and talk through three different alternatives with the UVDC. Alternative one is the plat proposal. The pros, as we saw it, were that we would get the non-motorized connection, the overlook, linear park facilities, and there would be two access points for West Highlands Park. The con was that High Street would be closed. The second alternative would leave High Street and the plat unchanged. The big pro was that High Street remained unchanged. That was obviously something that was valued by the West Highlands Park community. The, some of the cons, addition, in addition, the main con in addition to the ones that were pros for the other one, you know, not complying with the guidelines, not getting the non-motorized section, not having the overlook, is that we have this guideline, and this was kind of the driver for the applicant. There is a guideline that says you don't have houses with their backs and fences turned towards a road. And they worked for a long time to try and figure out a plat layout that would both have the configuration that they desired with houses facing each other across the street and not turn their back on High Street. And just really could not arrive at something that was a solution. This was, as I mentioned, the preference by most residents who attended the UVDC meetings. The third alternative, which I think everyone agreed was not successful, was to leave High Street unchanged but reconfigure the plat. So have the homes on the west side of the plat, have their front doors off of High Street, have an alley or just backyard fences, and then the other homes would face east, probably off of a new road that would be placed on the eastern property line. That didn't really solve many people's problems. It didn't really create a neighborhood through the design of the plat. High Street would have been lined with garages. It would have front doors, but it also would have had garages, which would have been one of the things that West Highlands Park was hoping to avoid. And then the other pieces, we'd lose a lot of on-street parking, and we would not have a lot of recreation and outlook or the multi-use trail.
There was a lot of, there's a lot of comment. Now, this, in, I want to say the record, because I know, I don't know how much in my packet actually splits these questions, like we're now considering them, the preliminary plat, which is quasi-judicial, then this. This material is all kind of mashed up together because it was, but there's a lot of comments about the Street A as an alternative. I didn't see or read any comments, if any, about Ellis Drive as the alternative. But, so what, as envisioned, I know it hasn't been designed, but can you share with me what you think, what was, what's, from a, from a driver's perspective? I'm very familiar with High Street, driven it and ridden it on my bicycle many times. What will Ellis Street be in comparison to High Street for a driver?
So Ellis is designed, because it's.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you had said it wasn't, so my mistake.
No, it's not fully constructed. I think that's what I meant to be conveying. So it has two 10-foot lanes and seven-foot parallel parking. I don't believe that there are any homes that have direct vehicular access. So there is a series of, you can kind of see it along here. There's a series of streets that intersect with Ellis, and it does, it is connecting from Ninth to West Highlands Park with some topography through here, which is part of the reason it curves. And there are also alley connections, I believe, here and here.
Will there be, do we think there's going to be traffic control, going to be stop signs, or is that going to be the, our main arterial, or the other ones will have controls that intersect with it?
I believe the north-south ones would have stop signs, and Ellis does not have any.
So somebody traveling east or west on Ellis, basically, you said, you said 10 feet. How, what are the lanes right now on, on, on High Street?
Nine.
Nine. But you also said seven for parking, and I believe that's like a, it's a little narrower than the standard, at least I thought.
So it depends on what standard you're talking about. Isquah Highlands started with six feet, which.
Right, and we just did something in Highlands, in Central Park, expand those to eight, I thought?
I thought they were being expanded to seven, but it might have, it might have been eight because the travel lanes for Central Park Road are nines.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. So there, there would be no controls in terms, there's no stops, so they would be able to pass through. And the speed limit will be, what's the speed limit on, I think it's 25 on High Street? What would it be on Ellis?
I think all the roads would be 25 or 30. I, I don't typically set those, so I don't know offhand.
Okay.
I can find out.
Well, and, yeah, the reason I'm asking is, is, again, there was, there's a lot of comment about A as the alternative, but what I saw was, is Ellis as a, also a very viable alternative, and I'm just wondering what, how that compares.
I think, well, I think to speak to your point is, we think of both streets as alternatives.
Understood, understood.
One would have more, it would have maybe the same number of intersections, but many more driveways, and so might feel, might slow people down more. Ellis would have intersections and is still designed to get people to drive at the speed limit, but would have less activities because there wouldn't be so many of the individual driveways.
All right, thanks.
Can you go back to the slide where you were talking about the views?
That one?
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to understand. So the, the notional view is really at the, the notional view feature is pretty much at the center of the usable view area? Is that, is it sort of the elbow, the interior elbow there, if you will? Is that right?
I believe so.
Okay. The other thing is, are you going to be showing more, you showed one of the proposed section views. Are you going to be showing other section views in this presentation? And I'm getting specifically at the skate park, skate feature or whatever.
Right, so there was a lot of discussion about the skate park, which is not like a full-on skate park. It was meant to be kind of like a little kid's learning skate park. That did get a lot of attention, and I think that was part of the driver for going back and having this community conversation about whether that is really the right use. So it is shown in the sections, but all of the conditions say that these uses are not final until we go back and have that community conversation.
So how do we know what the community benefit, seems like those, those, the sum, I mean, it's in, it's in these pictures. It seems like the sum of the features of this facility is sort of the sum of the community benefit. So how do we know?
So how do we know what we're talking about? If we know, if the benefits, the numerator and the, and we, you know, the cost is fairly well-understood amongst the negatives and the various options, how do we get our arms around the, the number, the numerator, the upper number?
You must do a lot of math. So I think that there are certain elements that are fixed. The trail, its basic width, its length is known. The outlook and the other nodes and connections, those are known. There are three activity centers that are shown. I think the applicant would say, if these are acceptable, we will do these. I think what the city and the UVDC and the Iscoa Highlands Community Association said is, we would like to have a conversation about whether these three activity centers are the right activities for the community. So while they are not, it is not saying that it is A, B, and C, it could be A, B, and C, or it could be B, C, and E. You know, that's part of why we, because the plat is establishing the basic framework and isn't the design typically, we wanted to go back and, if, if this moved forward, then that seemed like a good time to go back and have that conversation, given that there was a certain amount of fixed framework that came with this.
Okay. So we don't, we don't want to talk, we don't want to talk today about what looks like it works or doesn't work about a particular skate park feature, is what you're saying?
Well...
Who knows if that'll show up?
Yes.
So, I mean, one of the things, if, if it's important for the council to know what those features are, I mean, there could be, that could be part of the process. I mean, I think if, if, if you guys feel like there's that ambiguity of not knowing exactly whether the features here are, are going to be here, I mean, it could be that we go out, we have those conversations, we come up with our menu, we bring it back, and with the understanding that, you know, in theory, you guys would be pointed towards supporting, turning, I mean, I don't think we'd want to go have a conversation with the community and say, hey, what do you want in this recreational feature, and then have you guys say, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to take the cars off that street. But if, if there was a desire for you guys to do that, I think we could figure out a process to make that work. I just don't know if that's what your question is really aiming at.
Let me try, let me try to phrase it differently.
Sure.
So Jeff Bezos talks about the swordfish, which is, if you have on the menu swordfish as one of your items, and you go say, oh, I like the swordfish, and they say, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have the swordfish, like, don't, don't show the swordfish, right?
Yeah, right.
And I'm trying to understand the possibilities of the kinds of features here, and what the, what the community benefit might be of the types of features you can put in a piece of property that's like 17 feet wide and 20 miles long, or whatever it is. And so, and I, and I'm skeptical about the particulars of a skate park feature because of what I saw in there. So I'm just trying to understand what's actually on the menu and what swordfish.
Gotcha.
So I think that we have three kinds of fish on the menu. We have fish on three different, three different kinds of fish available. I think what you're wanting to make sure is it isn't all sardines and herring. That might be fine for one of them. Some people like sardines and herring. We definitely heard certain requests from the community. I'd be glad to put that list together and bring it back to the council. I think, I think we're in a little bit of a feedback loop, that we're trying to ensure that this is something that we're committed to before we go out and get everyone really excited about it and settle on certain items. At the same time, we do understand that you want to feel a certain level of competence, as you said, that there's a public benefit that makes this a good choice.
I just, there are certain things about that particular thing, as much as I enjoy skate parks and have been an avid proponent of them, there were things I saw in there that made me think it was unlikely that such a feature would ever actually be built.
And I frankly think that it's unlikely that it would be one that the IH, I, I'm pretty sure the IHCA does not want it, and since they would have liability, it would seem like they would get a big say in that.
I was thinking more about people grinding their skateboard edge, like, you know, 12 or 15 feet in the back of somebody's house.
Well, that was the second thing I was going to get to, is we have identified that nuisance activities would not be ones that are selected. Now, obviously, one person's nuisance is another person's delight, but I think for that reason as well, just maybe hours, noise, that would not, my guess is that would not be one that would end up staying on the menu. And I would add, I'm, we are interested in, if council members have strong feelings or ideas about that, it is right-of-way. So, I mean, we do want to hear that. We're just also trying to preserve the opportunity to have a conversation with the community.
We also will have public comment, and the applicant is here, and I see indications that he might have comments about that, too, about intentions. Paul?
Last question about view. In preparing for this, I had the impression that there would be the views northwest along the entire corridor, whatever that was, and view corridor, and now I'm going to say restricted between your two red arrows there. Now I'm thinking, maybe that's not the case, that it's just going to be one view platform that punches through maybe the Leylande Cypress that are there now. And I did also read in the material something about maybe some pruning, but, but how much view is really going to be there?
So, I, I think Councilmember Goodman also asked that relative to landscape, and I think that's something that I want to go pursue rather than try and answer based on what I know just right now.
Okay, so, so...
A suggestion?
All right.
So I think there's a couple of questions. One is, what can be preserved for the future? So on Lakeside's property, if somebody has a house there and they plant a Douglas fir tree, oops, there goes the view, because we don't have any control over that. And there's always the width of the view, there's also the width of the view issue. Is it possible to take a couple stakes or spray can and go up there and say, this is where the view, between these two?
Like where D and F would, those neighborhoods would be?
Yeah. This is legislative, we can go up there and look at it.
Right. I'll use chalk, but...
Because it doesn't rain here.
Good. Let's see if I have, oh, questions? I think, I don't know.
And then, just to follow up, if you could maybe let us know when that marking has happened?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Tola?
So, so one of the things is, because this is envisioned to be a local amenity, I have, I have a couple of questions around that. We have had other open spaces in Isicoa that were local amenities that didn't have facilities for parking and whatnot, and I'm here, I'm thinking about Hillside Park in particular, that have been sort of mixed success, right? We carved out some open space, we said people can go play baseball there, or whatever, and nobody ever goes and plays baseball, as far as I can tell. So it seems like people, two, two questions. Seems like people are going to want to drive there, especially if it's a nice view, and we don't know if there's going to be any other ways down the road to have quite a view like that from anyplace else up on, up in the Highlands, once everything gets built out. So how do we keep that from being sort of the same problems that we've had with Hillside, where we have to put up nasty messages to discourage people from parking around there?
Well, I think part of what I would say is that this is serving a big portion of the area, say, western Iscoa Highlands. It is bicycle and pedestrian accessible. I take your point that if this is successful and sort of meets the vision, it could draw more people. I will point out that West Highlands Park resident asked me to do some calculations, and I think generally, each of those neighborhoods that Polygon is building has something like three to four times, two, two times, two to three times, I'm doing this from memory, you can see, two to three times the amount of required parking. So there is on-street parking available on every single street. That isn't necessarily a parking lot available for people just coming to use that, but I don't think that's necessarily the vision of Iscoa Highlands, that every single, I mean, I don't, not sure that any park, except for Central Park, was required to have parking. So I know we're trying to strike a balance between not creating a problem and not designing everything around cars.
And then the second one, my question about this being a, a local amenity, is, you know, the, the letters that were included in the packet have, as, as you alluded to, existing residents have been fairly negative. So how, as a council, how do we, presupposing that somebody wants the council to vote yes on this, how do we get our arms around the fact that it's a local amenity that the folks who are locally there right now don't want? Or, or at least the feedback that we've gotten, in other words, is there a way to do a survey? I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but how do we, how do we get around the fact, the only data we have around local folks thus far seems to indicate at least the folks who want to contact us are not super enthused about this?
So of the West Highlands Park, I assume that all the communications that I received were from West Highlands Park people. One was positive. The rest, you're right, were negative, too, very negative. I would say, we asked both the chair and the vice chair of the UVDC to attend tonight. Both of them are out of town, unfortunately. They both live in Iscoa Highlands, and were both very positive about it. Now, one of them lives in the Brownstones, which is not too far away, and I think described ways in which he would see using it. So I, I, I don't want to negate the West Highland Park residents' concerns and to downright rejection of the idea. On the other hand, I would say that of the commissioners and non-West Highlands Park residents who attended, they were very positive. So I think that it's a little bit of a conundrum how we approach that, and I think we'll need to think about that in the next month that we have.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay. It's time for public comment, so I would imagine that there are folks here that would like to speak to this item? Come on up to the microphone.
Yeah. Ah, yeah. That PowerPoint?
The PDF.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, you know what, I should have pulled up the packet, and you're, it's in there, so let me, give me just one second.
Yeah, it's in the packet, and that'll work.
I see a show of hands, people who want to speak to this item? Thank you.
Oh, no, I need to go to the committee, I'm sure. Give it just a second, it's a big, it's a big file.
Okay. Well, I can at least start and introduce myself.
And if folks would keep their comments to five minutes, that would be great. Yeah, I know.
I'll, I'll try my best, but I did write it down, so it is limited, but I may not make the five minutes. So my name is Mike Zaluski. I am one of the angry West Highland Park residents.
But he's really nice.
So I'll, I'll just leave it at that, then. My presentation packet was in your, your info stuff, so please look at it, it does have pictures.
It's nice to put a face to the pack, to the...
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and read through this. First of all, I am very skeptical of, of this proposal. I think it's important that we mention some background that I have, that I have driven and biked and walked on High Street well over 1,000 times during the seven years I've lived there. I'm very familiar with the area. It's a very extremely useful, safe asset for all of those modes of transportation. What amazes me about the idea of converting High Street from a road to a path is how it's completely taken a life of its own, that it's far from the original intent behind the sudden proposal introduced just a few months ago, and that motivation of the developer, it must be questioned. The history of this important, the history of this is important, because the idea of High Street conversion was never part of the original plan. The subject only came up earlier this year. As we alluded to, it was the design guideline of having no backyard fences facing an arterial street. So the solution was to eliminate the road, sure, why not? That's the easy solution. If I were the developer, I would do the same thing. As the discussion progressed through the UVDC, the subject that I kind of am hearing here is that this transformation of the park is now a greater good, it's a great asset, but, and that's the, the recommendation that it ultimately came to. The fact, the fact that the bills being considered today are even separated from the rest of the Westridge plat supports the conclusion that by separating, the city staff is basically saying that the High Street conversion now has no relationship to that original design guideline or the design of the neighborhood, for the whole reason this, this proposal came about. Again, let's see, if I skip ahead to the important stuff here, doody-doody-doo. Yeah, so, you know, Polygon is a for-profit corporation, we really have to question the motivation here. Why would they be spending all this money? I, I don't think it's for the greater good. I honestly think that people, that it's easier to sell the houses with not having a road in their backyard. The proposal, proposal is not as useful. You can use that road and that corridor 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, rain, sun, any conditions. And to be honest, this is, this is going to be a very small trail. It literally is 500 steps long. I've, I've walked it. It's not going to be some grandiose park that people are going to go to. Just go to the Swedish Trail, it's much longer, you might see a handful of people. It's just not worth it. We're giving away a public road here to a developer. This is exactly the reason why we put in place this, this development moratorium. We need to take a step back, we need to take a good, sound decision and look at all the information here. I really don't think this is a good reason for this corridor. Now, if this were like a city-proposed proposal, I think things would be much different, because I think there would be vested interest, there would be, you would be a stakeholder, and I believe that you could do it right. You would listen to the comments, but the, the fact is, is this is not happening, and that it, it, this is not the best use for that corridor. So, okay, let's see here. Right, the other thing I want to talk about is if the question was posed to the developer, if, if we wanted to build this park, or, of course, it's okay to build this on this public road that everybody uses and it's owned by the city, but if we asked the same question to build the, the park on the developer land, like, the answer would be a flat-out no. And why is that? There's a lot of hypocrisy there. It'd actually be better, because it's higher up, you'd have unobstructed people. So what I ask you today, there's more information here, but please reject the UVDC recommendation for High Street. You should not, just don't be pressured by this. We don't have to make this decision now. There's so many unknowns. We're going to have a school, we're going to have Lakeside, we have no idea how this is going to end up. We can make this decision later, we don't have to do it with this. That's all I ask, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Are you the only one?
No.
Okay. So, could you put up that picture where you're showing, where you're saying the trail is going?
Like that one? Is it a map?
Further out, yeah, it's a, it's the map that shows how it connects.
Like that?
That one, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Connie Marsh. I'm sort of a fan, mainly because I very much liked a trail that goes around Swedish, and I liked the concept of the trail that the community got together and, and tried to keep in place that goes here. And I'm a fan of this one, that goes here. And my image is that you would have connections to be able to get to this sort of looping on and off system... on-and-off system of trails that would be very interesting, longer, and multi-use to soft surface and people could choose and would become a community amenity. I don't think it's going to be a regional draw because it's, you know, even now, as the vegetation goes up, the views get more peek-a-boo. And I like the concept of connecting to Lakeside because Lakeside is supposed to also connect to the Valley floor, so that gives you this potential to go down High Street, connect with Lakeside, and do sort of a zigzag through Lakeside to the Valley floor, which is frankly a thing of beauty. And if you keep it the way it is now, you'd basically be going down the sort of raw, at least, it's not attractive now. And so, I think even if it stays how it is, you would need some sort of vegetation plan or something because it's stark. So, the questions that I have are similar to what I'm hearing is, I don't really understand how much influence people are going to have in the process. If it was a parks process, I would understand a little bit more about how that would work. So, the outreach for the public process, how people are going to come to a conclusion because trying to drag a significant number of people to a UVDC meeting is unlikely to happen if that was how it was going to go. So, I'm reiterating. In general, I think it's sort of a bright bulb idea, and I can see all the connections, and I can totally understand why West Highlands Park is not a fan because they sort of have their own private road right now. But I don't think your own private road was the vision of Isqua Highlands. Isqua Highlands' vision was to have a connected, multimodal parks to people and active community, not an automotive-oriented anything by the time you get to the end. And so, I think it is supported by the intent of the Isqua Highlands. It is sort of awkward, I got to say. The whole thing is sort of awkward with the city right-of-way and sort of forcing a public process. Enough. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Okay, next. Let's go, we've got lots more meeting.
Lots more meetings.
Yeah.
Hi, Nick Abdellmar, Polygon. Thanks for having me, thanks for taking the time. It's good to see you guys again. I feel like we saw a lot of each other last year. I heard a lot this evening, so I just took some notes, and if for some reason I missed something that you do not get answered, Lucy and I will do our best, you know, to work with staff and get them answered before the next meeting. Timeline, we formally made application, Polygon, to the City of Isqua back in June, June 17th of 2016 for this plat. So, this has been a process for us to work with city among not only the TDRs that we worked with you intensively on last year, but just all of the residential units that we had in general. This may feel unique to you and to the residents of Isqua, but what I'd like to share is our personal and professional experience. We've done something very similar up in the city of Mill Creek, and we did it less than four years ago, where we developed and planned a public park for the city of Mill Creek. It's called Buffalo Park, and it's off of 132nd and 35th. What we did intentionally with staff and planning commission was we did public outreach. We did two evening meetings. We invited public notice within 300 yards of the property and then some, whatever directed by staff. And we actually gave them sheets of white paper. We actually gave them work-study groups, and then at the end of about 15 minutes, have them all come together and say, "What are your top three, top six?" It was pretty cool to see what they came up with. This is something we've never discussed with staff, but it is our experience. It took time, but it was rewarding, and once the public came together and said, "This is our top three," we then took it to planning commission and in turn, a city council body for final approval. Behind the scenes, we did work with staff and say, "This is the budget." You know, "This is something that we can work with financially." And we come to an agreement, and we try to hit it between the uprights. So, this is nothing new to us, but it is something we've done successfully. If you have time here in Mill Creek, it's a city-owned piece of property, it's city-maintained, it is all theirs, but it was all public input. I want to address Tole Martz, I guess, your concern as far as what a skate park looks like or what other amenities. I would try to put those concern ideas just for the time being as placeholders. You know, when we're so early in the process, we try to come up with ideas that the public would engage in. Are they perfect? By no means. That's why I think Lucy said we have agreed to go back to UVDC, let alone a public process that I've just noted, to go see what it is that the public wants first, and then what staff and Parks Department would support, you know, as long as IHCA would like to maintain that as well. So, we're open to that. It's a blank canvas as far as we're concerned. But we're asked with staff to get something in front of you, some ideas, so it wouldn't get married up to somebody grinding their skateboard at 10:00 p.m. at night. I mean, that's something we wouldn't want as well. I think it was great that Lucy touched about the open space requirement. I know it's, there's a lot of sunsetting going on. So, yes, the DA has sunset. We were fortunate to get vested, all of our residential units through the development agreements, and so with that, there is no open space requirement. I just want to reiterate that, but we are trying to meet the expectations as to what bar we have set in previous and in current projects. This, to me, was an opportunity for our company, nothing more. Quite honestly, not to belittle it, but we sat with staff and we saw this High Street conversion reuse as an opportunity. I think Lucy did a great job in presenting, one, two, three options. I won't pull it up, but I think she did summarize the public sentiment, the UVDC sentiment about what their preferences were. One is our proposal in front of you. West Highlands Park has been pretty vocal in the sense of, "Why change it? It's not broken, don't fix it." There has been unanimous support for alternative two as well, which is what you'll see next, and we'll get to it in the next A B, which is our plat proposal without changing High Street. We support that as well. And I don't think there's been any resonating support for alternative three. So, I just want to reiterate that we support multiple alternatives, not just one, but we thought this was an opportunity to do something cool.
I'm going to ask you to start to wrap up.
Wrap it up, that's fast. So, you had asked a question, I'm going to answer it for you, Stacy, which was, you had asked what the new replacement regulations, I looked them up while we were waiting very quickly. While they don't pertain to us, it's 250 square feet per net new residential unit, just so you know. And I did want to do this real quick, just so you guys have some context. Paul, you were driving into Ellis. I don't know where this thing can go.
Over in the front.
Front corner, I mean.
By you. Let's see if this works. So, this was something we took in March, just, you know, to try to give some flavor of sort of real, oh, boy. Hopefully, this comes up. So, this is, should come up. So, this is pretty real-time, it's a couple months old, but at least you can understand what Ellis looks like. I know a lot of people are walking it, it's not open to the public, but it's, you're like, "I've ridden my bike on it." Okay, so that is what it is. So, I just wanted to give some perception of the alternative of what it looks like while it's not open to the public. You guys can see it as an alternative to High Street, so I'll let you guys go. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. That'd be interesting if we could get that included for, in the packet next time. Interesting exhibit. Okay, so, we said at the beginning of the meeting, this will be back to us next month. Are we ready to move on to the next agenda bill? Okay, thank you. The next agenda bill is Agenda Bill 7480, it's a companion agenda bill to the one we just talked about. This one is the larger topic, High Street is part of this project, but the Westridge-North Preliminary Plat, this is a quasi-judicial matter, and so, it's a closed record. And if Lucy, you wouldn't mind explaining what that means?
Yep, we get to go through the questions. So, quasi-judicial is a particular kind of permit. It's our decision-making has to be like a court where our proceedings not only have to be fair, but appear fair. We do that through both procedural due process and substantive due process. I love explaining this to a lawyer. Procedural due process has to do with the process that we use, notice, certain kinds of steps, and it also focuses on the decision-maker's relationship with the people who would benefit. Substantive due process means we make decisions based on adopted regulations. So, I would like for the committee members to read through the questions on the screen, and then I will ask you some questions.
You're going to be reading these questions?
Just to yourself. I can read, if you want me to, I'll read them out loud. Do you, how many people answer no to all the questions? Okay. And then the other piece of it is ex parte context. All of our decision-making has to be on the record in public, and so, the question is, have there been any communications with outside parties outside of the record about this permit?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, closed record, public meeting. Again, the purpose of tonight is in, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify, can you go, the closed record. So, the record consists of the agenda bill. The record also consists of any materials that are referenced in the agenda bill, just because it's not in, if it's not in the packet but it's referenced, then that material can also be considered, just to be clear.
Right, and you could also watch the UVDC meetings as part of that as well.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. So, again, introduction, informational context. The plat and High Street are somewhat connected, and the plat right now is designed to work with the conversion. We have to use the record, and this is a high-level review rather than a design review, just to refresh that. Again, the context, I just want to make this part of the record of this, that we are looking at the piece of property, it's called Block Three, it's one of several properties owned by Westridge with surrounding uses that I believe you all are familiar with. So, here are some views of the property, taken from various locations. So, at approximately the entrance of Ellis is the view, and you can see the kind of view to Lake Sumamish that's available from there. These are two different, View Two and Three are two different views of High Street. View Two is as if you're coming right off of Ninth Avenue. View Four is down on the Valley floor, looking up towards the property. The property is just under nine acres, they're proposing 73 lots for houses, eight tracks, two of them are recreational, there's a series of east-west trail connections, and then two end-of-block little landscape tracks down at the south end. It's a house-and-garden neighborhood type. There is an adjacent steep slope that's associated with Lakeside, it is outside of the plat, and the plat is vested to the Isqua Highlands Development Agreement. So, streets, as we discussed, the main street that is being proposed is the Green Street or Street A that runs down the middle. There was a connection or is a connection proposed to Federal, which would continue all the way out to Ninth. Ellis is outside the plat, but would connect also, is being extended to connect all the way to Ninth. We're leaving a portion of High Street to allow for the connection to Lakeside, and there is a vun earth that we will speak more about that is proposed to connect to Park. Parallel parking is proposed on both sides of Street A. This is, again, the street context, you haven't seen that before. Street A, it is, there was a lot of discussion about Street A and slowing traffic and how it will work as a neighborhood street. One thing I went, that I did in response to a commission question was to go back and look at the various Isqua Highlands street standards. Neighborhood streets all have on-street parking on one or both sides, whereas the higher-speed, higher-capacity streets are the ones that do not have on-street parking. There had been a question about whether no-on-street parking might be safer. Street A is about 34 feet curb-to-curb, and there was a lot of discussion about traffic calming. The street is not straight, it's kind of what I call a lazy S. There will be curb bulbs where there are trail crossings, intersections, and hydrants, as long as it doesn't interfere with larger vehicle movements such as buses or fire trucks. And so, the intent is really to create a narrow yet functional street. Did you have a question?
I'm going to move your desk.
There was questions about what kind of crosswalks get marked. The city generally, on this classification or level of street, does not mark crosswalks at intersections, but where the trail crossings, the sort of mid-block crossings would be, those would definitely be marked. And so, that's it.
Is that its name?
What?
Street A?
No, no, that's just what they called it in the plat. It would have a number because it's a north-south street. I think, I've seen sixth place. Believe me, there is a very elaborate street naming selection process that goes, works with east-side fire and rescue, existing street grids, numbering systems. It is way above my pay grade.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Grades, again, just to include this as part of the materials that we're considering, maximum allowed grade is 12%, and all the streets within the plat are less than that. A lot of discussion about the vun earth and the extension of Park Drive. The way the plat was proposed is shown in the lower left-hand corner. The orange streets were the two that were shown as connecting, and that would be Federal and Ellis. The green arrows in these three locations were shown as trail connections. And when staff began to look at the plat more closely, they, we required that Park Drive be extended. We suggested a vun earth. Part of the reason that we suggested that is that we wanted the seam between the non-residential property to the east and the residential property to be a very distinct edge, a very clear indicator that you were entering a different kind of community. One of the comparisons that we identified was Heron Lane in Isqua Highlands. This is where Central Park Road comes out. It, and this is the photograph of it here, it's an 18-foot-wide vun earth with parking on the side, it's approximately 8%, but it's at least two times as long as the vun earth that's being proposed in this location. There was, there were a lot of comments about this, mainly from the property owner to the east, and so, there were material, these are the materials that we put together in response to that. First of all, the development agreement looks for an interconnected street system, and that dead ends only be used in unavoidable circumstances. It was noted that the traffic study did not indicate that the connection of Park Drive was necessary, however, that isn't the only indication. We're trying to create a fine-grained interconnected network, and in the urban design guidelines, streets are the preferred, the first choice of connection, and trails are the second choice where streets or some other kind of multimodal connection is not possible. There was an indication that this was not anticipated, staff disagreed with that assessment. If you look at the right-of-way and existing street systems, you can see in this blow-up of that, that the right-of-way goes around a stub that's already been constructed, that occur, that kind of street stub exists at both Park Drive and Federal on the west side of Ninth Avenue. So, we thought that was another. So, we thought that was another indication that that grid connection had been anticipated. And also, in early discussions with Polygon and Gary Young from Polygon, this was, these streets were shown as going through. Before the plat was submitted, we understood that the topography was such that it was not practical to make that connection, but as we studied the grades of the plat that was actually submitted, we believed that it was practical, and proposed the vun earth connection to preserve a connection, both a vehicular, pedestrian, and bike connection between the two neighborhoods. Approval condition 19, two things I note about that. First is, as it went through the UVDC, there was a lot of discussion about whether a vun earth was the right scale of facility to provide between these two neighborhoods. They understood the desire to have a very clear distinction, that you're entering a residential neighborhood, but were concerned that the level of traffic might be such that co-mingling cars and pedestrians might not be appropriate. And so this, this portion of the condition, this phrase, "with segregated pedestrian facilities" such as bollards or curbs, was added by the UVDC. Subsequent to the UVDC meeting, but before we issued the recommendation, staff realized that kind of the way the condition ended up being finalized included some language, which made the condition dependent on property that Polygon did not own, and that's not really something you can do with a plat condition. We went back to all the committee members who are, commission members who voted on it, showed them this revised language. They agreed to this, and then that was circulated with clear strikeouts in the recommendation so that if someone had a concern, they were able to comment on it. So, this is the recommendation that's been pulled forward.
Well, this only addresses the blue section there, not the arrowhead, because that's outside the preliminary plat, correct?
Yep.
It's going to be a vun earth, and this says 10 feet wide with segregation for, so it's, it's a vun earth, but boy, it sounds like a street with that width.
Right. Well, it, it's, it's got two 10-foot lanes, and it's going to have segregated pedestrian facilities. That could end up being a street, or it could end up being more like some of the character streets that Polygon has built in other areas that have five-foot walkways on either side separated by bollards.
So it's not, it's not a vun earth. We, we had proposed a vun earth, and the commission felt like that was too small of a facility.
Okay, because some of the material we saw earlier, okay, so I missed that point, that it has gone through an evolution, and now, even though you compared it to a vun earth-
It's bigger.
It's not anymore.
Right, and, and thank you for pointing that out. One of the things I've done is tried to use the slides that I, or had already prepared, and so I'm not, I, I didn't do a good job of sort of talking through what stage those slides were from, so thanks for clarifying that. The pedestrian system. The streets that are shown, Street A, the extension of Federal, the extension of Ellis, all have sidewalks on both sides. High Street has bike lanes on both sides. There is the facility that is not a vun earth, that would also have separate pedestrian facilities. But the topography is such that the streets are, and also with High Street being proposed to be closed for vehicular traffic, the streets were not connecting through. And so, the applicant proposed a series of through-block passages, neighborhood trails that would connect through. So there's one at the north where Park Drive would have gone through, one at the Federal Drive extension, and one that connects through, down here, it doesn't necessarily align with the street. I think one of the things to point out is, this area, when it was planned for Microsoft, had superblocks, and so that's been one of the challenges in planning this area, is how to break these superblocks down into a grid that's more consistent with a residential neighborhood and the character of Isquah Highlands. I'm not going to talk about the little details on the right, because I think there's some better slides of that in just a minute. But just to give you a sense, you know, we're getting, in the northern part, there are connections about every 350 feet, a little larger down here in the middle, basically because both streets are wowing in opposite directions, but we are in the 450 to 550-575 There was a lot of time spent talking about tracks D and G. This is the southern ones, and the fact that they don't align. Staff had written a connection from the beginning, kind of each time we came back to the commission, there was further refinement, trying to get clarity on what would be acceptable and consistent with the development agreement. In the end, what the applicant showed and the commission agreed to was leaving the tracks in basically the same place they are, but angling them such that, again, with the trail even further angled, you were able to get a consistent view all the way through. It would mean that we're averaging the borders on either side of the trail, but we felt that that was an acceptable compromise to get really clear sightline from one end to the other. Parking, technically not part of the plat, but it is a big topic whenever anything gets reviewed. The green parking that's shown in the garages meets the minimum requirement. They are also showing two parking spaces on every driveway apron, and they, those would be at least 18 feet long, to ensure that they don't overhang onto the sidewalk. In addition, there is on-street parking. Staff was a little bit skeptical about the number of on-street parking stalls that were shown, and there is now a plat condition that, when we begin to review the site work permit and look at where the actual driveways and fire hydrants and all those other things that can impact on-street parking, excuse me, that we may require paired driveways. And by that, what we mean is the driveways are kind of closer to, on either side of one property line, and then not on the other side, so that you get longer stretches of street that not only accommodate on-street parking but improve sightlines. I again spent some time talking to Kurt Seaman about challenges that they've had in some other neighborhoods, and it was trying to help get, provide on-street parking but less likely to have enforcement issues or problems and complaints later on. As I mentioned, there are two tracks in the plat that are park tracks. The square footage I'm showing here, I don't think is correct. It's different than the one I just saw when I was doing the High Street, so I will confirm that for our next meeting. But suffice it to say that at the north end, there is a smaller sort of pie-shaped piece. At the south end, there is a larger sort of linear piece. Right now, that obviously has the extension of the multi-use trail. If High Street was not allowed to be converted, then that park area might be used in a different Same thing, just to give you the larger context of park facilities in the area. Okay, now we're down to the really wonky stuff that sometimes councils have to talk about, which is easements. This is not something the UVDC focused on very much, but by approving the plat, you would allow these changes to be made, so I want to make sure that they're clear. I'm going to start with the easy one first, which is easement number three, which is over one of those landscape tracks at the very south end of the plat. This has a site distance over it. That is to make sure that the landscape and, and materials that are put on that piece of property do not block sightlines between people coming downhill and people coming out of Street A. Easement number two, when Microsoft was doing some of the preliminary infrastructure work in this area, they installed and recorded easements as if Ellis was going to go through in a completely straight alignment. Because of the topography and the desire to connect at this particular point with the West Highlands Park neighborhood, the road is being curved to make it a more gentle grade, which means that we need to abandon the infrastructure and the easements in the former alignment and relocate them to the new Ellis Street alignment. Number one is the hardest one. So the way, when High Street was dedicated, there was a six-foot band that was not dedicated to the city but was given to High Street Mini Storage. That band corresponds with the on-street parking in this location. And you can see that in the kind of right-of-way lines in this location.
Can you go back to why it was-
So, just hang on for a second. So it's a tract that parallels right-of-way. The general public would assume it's all part of right-of-way, but you can see in that image on the bottom left, that there's actually a separate tract that goes from kind of the outside bike lane line to the curb, and that's not owned by the city, it's owned by-
Bob Gregg and I think-
So, so part of it was Port Blakely did that, so that, and when you drive past High Street, you can see there's U-Haul trucks parked there. It's actually not parked in public right-of-way, it's parked in a tract that they own.
So when that, I know, crazy. When that was recorded, there, the, there was, it was anticipated that at some point this area was going to be platted, and streets would come through, and retaining that was not going to make sense. You were going to have to be able to let streets come through. So, up to 100 feet of this can be taken back when the plating occurs. I've already talked to Bob Gregg, he's totally on board with that. So as part of this plat, 50 feet will be dedicated to the city. We've asked that the actual lengths be calculated. There's a fire hydrant right here, there are also site distance easements that might apply, and we want to make sure that there would not be any trucks or other parking occurring where it would impact the functionality of that intersection. And so there is a condition which requires Polygon, if the plat is approved, to work with Bob Gregg to determine where that point needs to be, to write a legal description and to dedicate that to the city. You can save, see why I saved the best for last.
Just to be absolutely certain, so, it's intersection with Street A?
Yes.
That's on the north. So, so you're only showing, and of course then, east or the right side of that picture is Ninth?
Right, so, much further over is Ninth. This, this is very long. This is just a very small portion of that easement. Ninth would not be located right here. It would be significantly further to the east.
Okay, I get it, thank you.
Any other questions on this? And just because I don't want to end with easements. There are, typically when we do a plat, we work with the applicants based on both goals and guidelines in the development agreement, to ensure that there is the ability to not only have the fronts of the houses designed in an appropriate manner, but where the sides of the houses will be exposed, either because there's an intersection or a trail, that lots are able to accommodate porches or other enhancements that you might not normally do on the side of the house. So there is a condition related to design enhancement that identifies which lots and the kinds of features that they would include. I think that's my last one.
Questions?
I thought I heard earlier, actually from comments earlier, but also in the previous topic, agenda item, that it was, the applicant could still go either way. This doesn't contemplate anything other than, I'm getting the name of the road right now.
High Street Conversion.
Thank you, Stacey, thank you. High Street actually being converted, as we considered earlier. So, why, what if, what if, the original proposal is rejected, as far as, you know, the High Street? Would that change this preliminary plat?
It might. We might need to remand it back to the UVDC to discuss the impacts of that. We, we have, we're kind of playing that out to see how these two pieces fit together.
So we think there's a conflict with the design guideline in Isquah Highlands, so if the council were to choose to not make the revision to High Street but wanted to approve this plat layout, we have to reconcile, I think, an internal conflict with the development agreement design guidelines, which relates to the backs of lots and streets. So you're kind of, you're creating an issue for us, but that's, we can figure it out some way.
So one thing that I- The question that I have, if there's a Plan B, if the High Street conversion isn't approved, what's, and, and we can either hear about it or not, depending on whether it was discussed.
So, at the UVDC, it was not discussed. I think that-
You have the slide with the three options?
Oh, yeah.
That would be helpful for this conversation.
I think I closed it, see, I was-
So this was deliberated at UVDC. They talked about the three choices, and, you know, so what you heard from Polygon is they're good with one and two, because that preserves their proposed plat, okay? One, I don't think we have a conflict, and that's why there's pros related to, to one. The cons related to two is this inconsistency with the design guideline, which, if that's a big enough issue, that would then kick you to three, which is go back and rework the plat, so that there's not an inconsistency with the design guidelines. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, and so the, but, but specifically what a plat revision in terms of how houses would be moved around, that part is not part of the record.
Yes, solution, how we solve that problem under three, we haven't even, that takes them back to-
Sure.
Square one in planning.
I just want to be-
Well, not maybe square one, square two.
I want to be clear. Okay.
And there was one point made by an anonymous source, that at the end of the, I'm just teasing, you saw him hand me a piece of paper. With the changes that were proposed to Park Drive to add the segregated pedestrian facilities, Polygon would have to move one, remove one lot, so they would go down from 73 to 72 in the plat, and the site development permit for the North Town Homes goes up by one.
So, so because they didn't approve the vun earth, they're actually approved the super vun earth, the one with the separate sidewalks or walkways?
[laughing]
Or that was their recommendation. It takes away from some of the lot width, and that costs, their conclusion was that cost them a lot.
Paul?
Can I ask what, maybe a dumb question, but the engineer in me wonders, if you wanted to go with alternative two and not, not comply with the design guidelines, couldn't you turn, right now, like the pictures that we have here, I don't know if that corresponds to in the slides, right? All the houses are more or less, for lack of a better word, portrait mode, right? Plenty of long ways. Turn houses sideways, and then put two, two sets of houses between High and, and A, you know, Sloman Drive or whatever it's called?
[laughing]
You could, you could meet the design requirements.
You could. You would lose lots because you're having more streets. All those, you'd have a street in between every four houses, and now, what's now a view? Nobody has their big view windows on the sides of their houses, right?
It's on the front.
It's on the front of the back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, and the houses that are, that are away from the hillside would not have- a nice view of the...
It would not.
Okay. That's why I thought I'd ask the question.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Lucy. We're ready for public comment.
No public comment.
There is no public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
That's why, that's why we're all here, to make sure we don't get in trouble.
So we are not allowing public comment? I don't get to say that very often.
No.
Doesn't feel really good.
Are we ready to go on to the next agenda bill? Does that mean, or?
Yeah, so we're done with Agenda Bill 7480. I just want to remind folks that this will come back at the meeting in July. And then, yes, you're dying to talk. Go ahead. And we'll come back, the meeting, the first meeting in July, we're going to talk about that date at the end of the meeting today because it's currently scheduled for July 5th. Paul?
So that meeting, whenever this is picked up again, I mean, so the, the public hearing is closed, the closed record is closed, it would just be a continuation of this conversation. You may have some stuff that comes back, but we still have everything, all the conditions for quasi-dedicial remain on us, and, but, but we would possibly be, we would, taking action at the end of next meeting.
Right. And, and I'll, I'll say that, that what I've heard is a lot of questions about High Street. I have not heard really any questions about the plat. So, I mean, there was a Plan B question. I'm not sure that there's anything within the record that we could provide at this time.
Well, I, I will say that there, the UDBC was very detailed in their review of this. And I, and it reads to me, as a non-UDBC person, just as a plain Jane council person, that there was a lot of expertise and thoroughness that went into their evaluation of that. Their, their findings, their conclusions, their comments back to, and of your conditions, and then that obviously went through a couple iterations. So, yes, I don't have as many questions, partly because, mostly because of the thoroughness of the record.
Well, and you know, I think frankly, we've been lucky that because we have so many longtime commissioners. Now, we lost two of them because they had thought that the UVDC, yeah, they thought the UVDC was going to end in December last year. And because the development, or the, the development agreement would be terminated, it went into this year, so therefore we went back through another appointment round. Plus, we have a lot of concluding permits for, under the development agreement. So two of them had already taken on new volunteer opportunities. But we did benefit with this plat from having that sort of lengthy expertise participating.
And it would not be impermissible for committee members to contact staff with questions?
Absolutely. It is, it is fine.
Or clarification.
Absolutely.
Yes. No new information, but if there was a question, it's not ex parte contact to contact staff.
Right. Excellent clarification.
Okay.
And if, I'm sorry, since you said that, I think, I'm not sure what materials you were going to bring back next time, but I, maybe the Vunner one was the only one, but if, maybe some cleanup so we can eliminate that confusion. And I think this last information actually at, and I wonder how this fits. I mean, with that being a street rather than a Vunner, and then we learned that, and there's one less unit, not sure that was material information.
I mean, that was, and, and I, I think that is an important clarification, that the UVDC was aware that that was the possible impact. It was maybe fortuitous, maybe not for the applicant, but for us, that the North Town Home project was being reviewed at the same time. So both permits at the UVDC, we could discuss that possibility of moving a unit between them. So that is not a material change. It is a material change over the course of it, but it was part of the record for both the North Town Home and the plat process.
Ready to move on? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Bill 7575, Timber Ridge easement modifications. Oh, look, it's Lucy Sloman.
Lucy Sloman all the time. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
So, these are changes to easements, and I'm providing some historical context to try and explain how we ended up where we are today. So in 2004, we approved a site development permit. And the image on the left is the site plan for that site development permit. And the two elements that I want to draw attention to are sort of the yellow box at the north and the blue line through the middle. When that site development permit was approved, we knew that was going to be multi-phased. They, at the time, they thought it was going to be three phases. It ended up being two phases because of the recession. In the original permit, Osprey Lane was shown as going through, and there was a requirement for some kind of active use. The ones that were given were like offices. In the end, what they ended up building in this northeast corner was home occupation units. There was a series of them. It was mostly because this was a big blank wall and they wanted a more active use, especially because that was so visible as you're coming into the community. Before they submitted, well before they submitted for the Phase Two building permits, the owner of Timber Ridge came to the city and negotiated two modifications. One was that Osprey Lane would stop being a vehicular road when it got to the building and become a tunnel through the building, that there would be a pedestrian passageway. And that the home occupation units would be converted to residential units with an elevator that connected into the building. Those were approved administratively. Any questions before I go on? So, as a part of the build-out, they're in the process right now of building those residential units in the northeast corner. And there are either dedications to complete building permits at the end of the second phase, or other kind of easement changes and swaps based on those administrative modifications that took place. Because easements were recorded at the end of the first phase, and they no longer match the ultimate configuration. So there are five changes that are taking place, or that are part of this package. One is the dedication of the rest of the road. Right now, right-of-way ends here and here, and so they are proposing to dedicate the rest of the right-of-way. Number two is dedicating the land between the road and parcel 17B as right-of-way. Number three is, this is a slope which supports the road, and in general, the city likes to own things that could impact the infrastructure. We've talked to both PWE and PWO, and they've agreed that, that we should have that slope. Number four are changes that result from not having the road go through, but the pedestrian way. So right now, the easement was for the full road width, but the two pink parallel bars are actually through the building. They aren't accessible to the public. And then they are, so they're asking us to relinquish those. And then they're proposing to dedicate this little triangular piece where there's a stairway that comes up from the pedestrian way through the building to the road on the west side. And finally, and potentially most confusingly, there was a series of easements that were dedicated, that were bundled together. Some of them were pedestrian access easements to get, to ensure that you could get from the right-of-way to each of the doors where those home occupation offices were. But also, there was a plaza requirement, and for some reason, they bundled the pedestrian access and the plaza access required easement into one easement. So it's very hard to know where each of those pieces are. So we're actually going to relinquish all of those, rededicate an easement for the plaza, which is slightly less square footage if we know, because they're all bundled together, but we're well over the 700 square feet. We're like 900 or 925. And then clean up the pedestrian access easements along this edge.
Sorry, where would the plaza be? Help me understand.
So let's go down to here. So I'm up at the northeast corner. It's called the accessory building. The plaza would be in this sort of area where the bright pink line is, and it is 981 square feet. It's only required to be 700.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. It almost, this almost just feels like...
So I call this housekeeping.
Yeah.
But, and some of these we are not required to bring to you. Like, we're allowed to dedicate roadways because, you know, but where we're relinquishing easements and then re-recording them, we, we must get your permission. This is real property. We had a long conversation with Jim, and we just, and we want to be very clear, we're not trying to surprise anyone. But we do need council support to authorize the mayor to allow us to then prepare all the legal descriptions and necessary documents to do this.
Well, I appreciate you putting in the information, even if it is administrative. Any other questions? Paul?
So Osprey, right now is a road that goes through.
It's never, it never went, is that true?
It never, so the problem was they had a grade issue, so you couldn't get, you couldn't get, couldn't get there. It was kind of like the two railroads. They didn't meet in the middle. So they did it as a trail connection and not as a road connection.
Okay. So pedestrians could walk through there?
Yes.
Yes. So they've actually purchased...
It's got art, actually.
It's got some really beautiful tile Native American art in the tunnel.
Yeah. Okay. And this cleanup, what does it do? I heard something about two different tunnels you were talking about.
Okay. So let me try this again where you're looking at more of the details. So the, the diagonal line, that poche, represents the easement that was recorded. But the pink here is the tunnel. So we have a bunch of easement on either side of the tunnel that's actually in building, that is not available to the public. They are also, you can see where the stairway connects from the tunnel up to the street level, and part of that is within this easement area, but this triangular portion isn't. So they're dedicating another easement to ensure that the entire route has a pedestrian, public pedestrian access route.
Thank you. I'll get it.
Other questions before, little comment? Okay. Anybody, anybody here like to speak to this? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jason Jorgensen with LCS Development. I've been the owner's rep for Timber Ridge at Talis for the past 10-plus years, and kind of fondly call Timber Ridge my fourth daughter. Anyway, I appreciate the description here, Lucy. You've done a nice job explaining it all. Only thing I would ask, you know, as you're hearing, it's somewhat housekeeping. We've been somewhat patient while the development agreement was ending. Your, your time has been pretty darn busy, and so this has come to now a just-in-time delivery. These homes are now sold, and closings are actually scheduled for the end of July. And I believe if you kick the can to the next meeting, we may have to move some closing dates, and some people have already made travel arrangements because there, a lot of them are out of state. So just, just to ask to see if we could get this approved tonight would help us keep on track with that. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. I think it is scheduled for action tonight. Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? Nope? Going? One, two, three, gone. Okay. So, I guess I would make a motion to adopt, oh, sorry, I would make a motion to recommend to the full council that the proposed changes be approved. Yeah?
Yep.
Everybody approved? And then I'm wondering how you feel about putting it on consent?
I would like it on consent.
Okay. You heard that?
Fabulous.
Yeah. It is for, I think, honor...
June 2.
Am I reading the wrong one?
June 2.
So that's not possible.
Several days ago.
It says, before...
2019?
I think it says come back before July 16, so I don't...
I'll, I'll talk to Tish and find out which one is possible.
Sure.
She and I had talked about July 18, and I don't know if it's possible to make July 2, but I would certainly like to try, and I'll, I'll see if I can make that happen. Because there's no, there's very little update and, and no new materials.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is not the Lucy show. This is Agenda Bill 7612. We have Trish Heinonen here from Development Services, and this is regarding amendments to the code about transfer of development rights resulting from the end of the Isaguah Highlands Development Agreement.
Oh, let me find it. Trish, how are you guys tonight?
We're great. How are you?
Good, thanks. Oh, let me just find...
It's that, it's that one.
Okay. It's very small on the screen. This should be a really easy one for you all, because you already have really done the fundamental piece of it. So, go. Go. Okay. TDRs. When you all did the end of development agreement for Isaguah Highlands in March, part of what you all did was you created a different location for where TDRs can be used in Isaguah Highlands, and you just gave it a, through words. And so we've gone back into the code to change the map and to change the actual TDR section of the code to make it fit with what you all said in the end of days. So what do they get from this? They don't get anything. They, it's just clarifies that the cap that they have is already in the end-of-days work that you all did. So going through very fast, these are the maps, the old maps, and then this is the new map that your words described. That's what it looks like in a graphic. The three amendments clarify no additional residential density, no additional building height, and no impervious surface. But you all did say that because of the, what you did in the development agreement and that there would be visions done next year. And so this is sort of a placeholder that if they're colored in on the map, that they have a shot at perhaps getting a, a bonus or a bump from the cap that you set. Not guaranteed, but it was just sort of a halfway point so that you all could get through the rest of the development agreement. These are just the three pieces of the code.
Explain that better? I don't understand.
Which part?
What's a placeholder? Placeholder?
Well, from my understanding of when you all started to talk about the TDR piece, and they talked about the vacant land and what was going to happen with that in the Highlands, you said, "Let's not talk about that yet, but we promise that next year we'll talk about the vision or the, whatever we want to happen on those vacant parcels" and not go into that when you were discussing the TDR piece. That was my understanding. Maybe Keith can translate?
So I think what Trish is trying to say is that, you know, what we talked about with ending the development agreement for the Highlands as it relates to TDRs was to shrink the receiving sites to an area within proximity of the park and ride garage. I think what Trish is trying to say is because we also made a commitment to go back to the community and talk about the vision for the undeveloped 20 acres that Shelter Holdings owns primarily, that there could be an outcome that says, "Well, gee, maybe that area is right for TDRs as well." I don't think we alluded to that.
There's not a placeholder in the code for that.
There is not.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And then just quickly, the charts, this is how the charts in the IMC were changed, just to make sure that it's very clear that there's no additional density, building height, or impervious surface allowed in those areas.
So the, the proposed revisions to the code make it consistent with what we agreed to do under the Isaguah Highlands Development Agreement?
Exactly.
Again, it seems like it's cleanup and housekeeping, but...
Yes, it is.
Oh, I told Trish that.
I wasn't allowed to use that word, so I'm happy that you used that word. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody here from the public have comments? No?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. I... Wow. Okay.
I love a good miracle. Consent agenda?
We haven't even taken action yet.
Oh, I could tell by your smiles, I'm sorry. You can make it official.
So I would, yeah, I would make a motion that we recommend the full council adopt as proposed.
Yep.
And I also would think it would be consent item material.
Excellent.
Yeah, okay. And then the last item we have is about the date. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Last item we have, unless you all have anything you want to talk about, is the July meeting. The July meeting is scheduled for July 5th, so I don't know what the plans are for folks that week. And then I think, there's a possibility of the 11th instead of the 5th.
That's a Wednesday, but the council chambers are open the evening of the 11th, so you guys could take that if, if that, if you guys are open.
And I want to know how you feel about the 5th. It was a question posed to me before the meeting started, and
So the 11th, I have Sound Cities Association.
Okay.
So I would not be able to be here on the 11th.
And we put our jeopardy of one in a row being broken.
Right, you'd hate to have the same three people here two months in a row.
I'm available on the 11th, and
You're not available on the 5th, by any chance?
Well, that was, I am available on the 5th. Prefer not to, I do have, we'll have family in town, and I already have to be at GMPB first half of that day. So that is, but I can, I can do either.
What does
So, I, I was just asking Trish, because Thursday night would be PPC, and she said that they could do it, meet some, try and find someplace else for PPC to meet if the 12th worked, so that, then in short, it'd be in here.
You can't do July 12th, we have a financial retreat, we have
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah. It's actually called Fun with Jen, but
We're going to miss the gas station.
So, would, is the preference then to leave it on the 5th? I mean, no
It's, it's not my preference, but I will go along with that if, because I will be here. Just make the agenda really short, like these last two.
You could invite your family members along
So what do we have, do we know what we have on the, is it just those two for that meeting?
So, it's, it is, yes, I'm going to go with
Yes. There might be one other thing, but let's go with yes. There's maybe two, or maybe three, but no more than three. We can manage that.
We'll keep it at July 5th?
That works better for me. I would like to continue attending the committee to which I've assigned myself.
Okay. Do we have anything else? We're good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.
Thank you.